To the individual who's speaking in the audience, sergeants, if you could help me identify them. This is your first and final warning. If you continue to disrupt the meeting, you will be asked to leave. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I believe it, yes, the guy who just raised his thumbs up with the beard and the black polo shirt, I believe, on our right-hand side of the council chambers.
Sir, you've been warned. You've been warned.
And you don't even know what the charges are. The international world and community does not even know what the charges are, why they're being detained. No one's even asking a question. No one's asking any questions. A genocide took place shortly after he was here by wiping out all 120,000 Armenians living on lands that they've been toiling and working on for the past 3,000 years, where my family from my father's side comes from. All were wiped out. All were forced out. Either some were killed during the war and after, the rest were all driven out. All this is happening because Azerbaijan, a petrostate that's supplying oil to the rest of the world, can't be bothered. We feel comfortable in using their cheap oil. That's why we will allow them to do this, all in the name of cheap oil. Fact is that this absolute dictator, right now, this country has been ruled by a monarchy. In fact, the current president was a playboy prince who was recalled from Europe to take the place of his dictator father when he was on his last legs, to the point where this current president has even appointed his wife to be vice president, and they call themselves a democracy. And yet, the rest of the world is fine with all of this. So how many times do the same leaders say "never again" when speaking of genocides of the past while closing their eyes to genocide in the present? If you love humanity, if you have a moral compass, if the words "never again" are going to mean anything, it's up to people like us, to you, to me, to speak out. Not last time, not next time, this time. Hundred and ten years ago, the Ottoman Empire tried to wipe the Armenian people off the face of the earth. It was a systematic murder. At that time, the word genocide had not been coined yet. Women were raped. Individuals were murdered in mass executions, herded into buildings to be burned alive. There wasn't the sophistication of gas chambers yet. Families and children were driven into desert without food and water. We will never know the real numbers, but at minimum, a million and a half people died at the hands of the Ottoman government. Its successor, the Republic of Turkey, has never acknowledged that these events took place, even though they were witnessed by the whole world, including our own very ambassador at the time of the United States, Mr. Henry Morgenthau.
I want to start off by thanking Councilmember Adrin Nazarian for bringing this together. You know, I've always said that as somebody who grew up in the San Fernando Valley, you make a lot of Armenian friends, right? And when you make a lot of friends, you learn about this experience and this history that your families have gone through, and it infuriates you to know that, you know, this is something that happens in the world. And, you know, I've always attended events outside of the city of Los Angeles where I see the Armenian community come together for these days and these moments of remembrance. And I've always told myself, we need to do more in the San Fernando Valley. So I was going to talk about it later on today in the announcements about how we're going to be having something here at Van Nuys tomorrow, you know, to discuss this, to elevate this, to remind folks that this is something that we should never forget. Because like you said, if we really want those words to ever mean, to really mean something, then let's be about it. So there's the invitation, but thank you more than, I really appreciate everything you put together for this presentation and elevating where we're at, because it's been a long time. It's been a conversation for a very long time, and, you know, hopefully in our lifetime, we'll see it get better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Padilla. Councilmember Bloomingfield.
Thank you. Want to add my voice to the chorus and thank you, Councilmember Nazarian, for bringing this forward. You've been a champion on this issue for so long. You and I had the pleasure of going to Armenia and to Artsakh together, gosh, like 10 years ago maybe it's been, and the world has changed so much since then. But your resolve and the resolve of the Armenian community has not changed. And I also wanted to reference, you did something great the other day when we were talking about the Holocaust Remembrance Day, how you linked it, that that might never have happened if people remembered the Armenian genocide. And I just wanted to uplift that sentiment again, because all of these genocides are connected in that sense, in that good people look aside and do nothing. At the end of the day, it's not just about the bad people who do these things, but it's about the good people who fail to stop them. So thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Nazarian, I'll try to put aside about my excitement to meet the two people standing next to you, because I loved the movie so much. I just appreciate, through the years that I've been on this council, Councilmember Krikorian before you, and now you bringing attention to the Armenian genocide. People sometimes ask when we do things here in council that we do them on a yearly basis, and explain to them the importance of that, the importance of shining a light on atrocities that have happened, you know, throughout the world, and why we have to keep talking about it, why we have to keep remembering and that. So I just want to say that I appreciate your efforts on this issue, and always know that you have our support in trying to bring attention to these atrocities, and just want to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lee, seeing no other speakers, I want to thank you, Councilmember Nazarian, for bringing this presentation forward. I learned about the Armenian community and about the Armenian genocide only after I became a council member. I had heard about it, but I really understood the gravity of what had happened only after I joined this body, and it was thanks to the efforts made by then-councilmember Krikorian that helped me gain awareness. And as a representative of a community where I have two big Armenian schools, Feragian and Encino and Merdinian, and so many Armenian constituents across my entire district, both on the valley side and on the Hollywood side, your leadership in carrying on this message that this body will never forget, this body will never look away, and for bringing in so many other members of the community who are doing that work, we are really grateful for it, and thank you for your leadership, and thank you for you for coming in today. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, and I couldn't do this without all of your support, so I very much thank and appreciate all of your work on this. Thank you for joining me and echoing the sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Kathy Schreiner. I'm the president of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. Although I'm speaking as an individual, I want to thank you again for coming out to the valley. It really means a lot to us to have this opportunity to participate and to give comment.
Good morning. I apologize. Which?
On item number one and general public comment.
Perfect. So you have two minutes. You have, we'll do one on one.
And I am in support of item number one. I knew the person who was one of the founders of the Japanese National Museum, American National Museum, and I know how important it is, so I'm really appreciative that this item is on the agenda, and I hope you'll vote for it. And for general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is about the budget. You're going to hear it from a lot of neighborhood councils. The mayor's budget proposes to cut our $32,000 annual amount of money to $25,000, $22,000, anyway, to really, cut it by 22%. I'm sorry. And that, we already have such a small amount of money, and you may know that neighborhood councils are all made up of volunteers. We use that money to pay for some of the administrative expenses of operating and also to be able to make some neighborhood purpose grants and community input projects. For instance, this year, our council is trying to help the library, the Van Nuys branch library, improve its signage, so it'll be easier for the public to find the library. And that's something maybe that department should have done, but they haven't done. And so the neighborhood councils really make good use of the budget, and we hope that you'll pay some attention to that. I also am really sorry that we're not going to be doing tree planting, because that's so important. The shade canopy here in the valley is something that really needs to be nurtured. Thank you.
My name is Mark Povolate. I'm here to talk about Little Tokyo.
Okay, great. You have one minute for the item, and you can take one minute for general public comment if you want.
Okay. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Mark Povolate. I'm a graduate student at University of Southern California. I have a focus in adult mental health and wellness, but today I would like to talk about cultural preservation amidst rising commercial costs in Little Tokyo. In recent years, many small businesses in Little Tokyo have struggled to keep up with these costs.
Sorry, I'm just going to interrupt you for one moment. If you could bring your, just bring the microphone a little closer to you, and if I could ask for people to generally be quiet in the chamber so we can hear public commenters, that would be great.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Of course. Over 20 businesses have closed since the pandemic, including businesses like Suhiro Cafe. And these businesses not only play a vital role in the local economy, but in maintaining the cultural fabric of the area. I respectfully ask the council to consider policies or partnership that promote commercial stability in cultural districts, including support-like initiatives like, such as the Little Tokyo Community Impact Fund. Efforts like these can make a meaningful difference in preserving what makes neighborhoods in Little Tokyo unique. I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Hi, so I'm here to talk about the Riverside Bridge Home Shelter that's located on Riverside Drive and Los Feliz Boulevard. Mrs. Rahman, I would really appreciate your attention, because this is in your district. So I want to let you know that the idea that you had in your strategy committee meeting about having property managers and developers go to the Riverside Drive Bridge Home Shelter to let them know available properties in the city, when people have vouchers, that they can actually connect with those people directly, that would be one good method that you could implement as a councilperson. It was an idea brought up in your homeless strategy committee meeting, and I support that. The second thing that I want to talk to you about is that we need more housing navigators at Riverside Bridge Home Shelter, because the throughput of that shelter is a near 8% as you're aware of, Mrs. Rahman. So we want to make sure that we're getting people through the emergency and the interim Bridge Home Shelter, so that people can, other people can actually utilize that shelter.
Next speaker, general comment on homelessness.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm a resident of Encino since 35 years. Now I moved to Tarzana. Our community experienced a deeply troubling rise in violent crimes, murders, assaults, home invasions, arson, drug dealings. The situation has become chaotic. People are afraid to leave their homes. People are afraid to stay in their homes also. You have allowed criminal activity to thrive in our community and the neighborhoods. Homeless encampments have become hubs for open drug use and sales. You just need to go and sit there and look at them. You'll see it. It's about 2,000 homeless people die in the streets every year from overdoses and violence. Your policies have brought an estimated 75,000 homeless individuals to the city, and that's, your policies are also taking away money from healthcare, from social security, and redirect it to illegals, and this is something you should be ashamed of. You are always united in your activity, and that's a shame.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Item one and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
I'll speak. Item one, this entire lack of agenda is a perfect example of the incompetence and sleaziness of sleazy Marquis Dawson. Item one is a $12 million for Japanese museum rehabilitation when the city is in a $1 billion budget deficit emergency, an ongoing and never-ending homeless epidemic emergency, a $275 billion fire damage emergency, and as always, a corruption emergency. I naturally oppose this motion, as is and demand it be modified with language to use at least $10 million of this $12 million to investigate the corruption, gross incompetence, and pay to play antics of the incompetent sleazy Marquis Dawson and the rest of these clowns, and also to investigate what Dawson and the city council was doing while the city burned to the ground. The city borrowing more money for this museum when the city is broke with no fire trucks is as absurd as Dawson and these clowns giving the LAPD. General public comment. The LA council is nothing more than an incompetent criminal enterprise. Due to our incompetent criminal government, the city is $1 billion budget deficit emergency, an ongoing and never-ending homeless epidemic emergency, a $275 billion, 6,000-home destroyed fire damage emergency, and as always, a sleazy council corruption emergency. Sleazy corrupt cowardice, little man Dawson thinks he can put literally nothing on the agenda and run out here to Van Nuys to escape the public. But the coward is wrong. Having literally nothing of these agendas shows exactly what Marquis Dawson is doing. Nothing, nothing, nothing. What was the corrupt little man Dawson party-hardy bass in the sleazy council doing while the city burned? Judge Carter has threatened to remove all homeless funds from the control of the city due to the fact that they can't even account for the money, let alone reduce homelessness.
Next speaker.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call more names.
I'm an LAPD city employee with EAA membership, Christina Flores, for general comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've worked for the city for 12 years, with, first with Animal Services and Office of Finance, and now with LAPD as a civilian employee. I just wanted to put a face and a voice to someone who is on the chopping block for layoffs. I wanted to let you know that the office I work for assists other law enforcement agencies with getting reports for assisting them in criminal investigations and prosecutions. Currently, we are very low staff. We are about a year behind. We are very desperately needing more staff. Also, I urge you to review the Charter Code 1015 regarding layoffs, because it only doesn't affect us. If we're displaced from layoffs, it will bump the next person's prior roles, which will trickle down all the way to admin clerks and potentially targeted local hire, which I know are just beginning their careers, and this will affect all city departments. And we need all civilian personnel in every city department to assist our communities. Thank you.
Next speaker. The item, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to wish Sean, it's his birthday. I hope you folks will all give him a big.
Mr. Candido, if you know the rules here, I'm going to ask you politely, as we've discussed before, please stick to the agenda items first, then you can go on to general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, let's, I'm all in favor of item one, the museum, and I am so proud of Mr. Nazarian. Your speech today, sir, in regards to what's happening in Armenia and the gentlemen that were here. I was here. I'm talking about the museum, the museum. I'm all in favor of that, and I'm in favor of what Mr. Nazarian said about the, what's happening in Armenia.
This is your last warning. Please, you're welcome to talk about that during general if you'd like.
All right, let's, I've got 18 seconds for the public comment. I just want to say thank Ms. Padilla for being, you know, this is nice. We waited a long time.
Okay, so I'm going to move you to general public comment, where you can talk about this. Okay, you have one minute.
Where's Mr. McCosker? I was in San Pedro. Mr. McCosker, the people in San Pedro are as nice as you are, sir. I will be there for Memorial Day. You folks have a great community down there. Now, I don't want to invite you up, I don't want to invite you up into Porter Ranch, because Reseda from Rinaldi to Cessnon, it's a danger zone. You know, we have the ET Park there, and it looks like a disaster zone. Kids are afraid to go there. Mommy, what happened here? Car's wrecked there. Am I going to get killed? Mommy, what's wrong with ET Park? When, when are those issues going to be fixed? You know, it's been going on for a while, and if somebody's trying to get back at me, so be it. I mean, you know, but you're hurting yourself, and, you know, these are things that need to be fixed within the city. Mr. City Attorney, is that okay? May I leave? Okay, I'm going this way.
Good, good morning. So, Mr. Candido, again, you're welcome to be here, but please do not disrupt another public commenters, so this is your first and only formal warning. Definitely do not want to have to throw anyone out. So, good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item one and general public comment.
You have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Item one, item number one, I'm for the museum. I think we should have, we should keep the museum open. Number one, shame on the mayor, cutting, cutting a lot of things down, sanitation, tree planting. Shame on you Karen Bass.
So would you like to move to general public comment, or do you want to?
I'm just doing general public comment.
Oh, okay. Sorry, you have one minute for, hold on, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
You interrupted me before you get a lawsuit on your hands. Shame on you Karen Bass for cutting a lot of things out, the sanitation workers, the plant, the planting of the trees, and I hope that guy, and the guy was arrested for trimming the trees here in downtown LA. Yeah, shame on you Karen Bass. I don't feel sorry for you. I hope you resign.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
So since we're no longer allowed to phone in and participate, some of us only get this once a month opportunity here in Van Nuys, if it's possible, can the agendas be excluding the items that have nothing to do with any of the council districts in the valley? That would help us valley folk that want to hear more about items pertaining to the valley. Another note, there's a water fountain over there that's been out of order for as long as I can remember. If it's possible, can you please fix the water fountain? And happy birthday, Sean.
Item number one and general public comment, Richard Serrano.
You have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Can we start his time from the top? Go ahead.
Everyone, smoking scan, thank you for helping me out and paying attention to all these things, and we can rebuttal on this stuff. Mayor Bass, the audacity that you.
So, Speaker, I'm going to ask that you stick to item one at the beginning, and then or you can move to general.
I'm speaking, sir. Can you stop my clock? If you're going to talk over me, stop my clock. Can you stop my clock?
Sir, go ahead.
I'm talking on it, you're stopping, and you're interrupting my time. 30 seconds now.
Sir, would you like to speak to the item?
Can you put it back to where it was 50 seconds?
You can speak to the item, I'm going to move you to general public comment.
I was trying to, but you interrupted the conversation. Can you put it back to 50 seconds?
So we are not going to reset the clock for you or anyone at this point.
The idea that you're putting $12 million out and getting rid of city employees is ridiculous.
Okay, I'm going to move you to, I'm going to move you to general public comment. Go ahead.
It's on number one, $12 million moving forward for the Japanese funding.
Go ahead, Mr. Serrano. We're all listening. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
It's ridiculous you got people here, and I hope this is my general public comment, because he took all my time up. The idea that you got people being laid off, furloughed, 1,600 people, and you got $12 million going to a museum? $12 million, really? What is this about? Let them eat cake, Maria Antonet, okay? Let them suffer because we got our jobs? The mayor went ahead and scolded three sanitation, excuse me, custodians that came here to hope to save their jobs last time we were here. Called the union store, why aren't they at work? But when she made the city address, what did she do? Loaded up her staff in that city council on the clock and paid them to applaud.
So we can give you an additional 30 seconds. Please finish your comment. Thank you so much.
You can't be that, man. You just can't do that, mayor.
30 seconds.
We are applauding what? The recklessness? This was already been told to you. No one pays attention here, or else we wouldn't have this financial thing. Look at my docket. Go ahead and say, I didn't say in 2022 you were going to be right back here with this financial loophole. Yeah, Bloomingfield, you know we said it, and here I am, pleading to you guys again. It's going to get worse.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
Good morning, city family. It's great to be back here. General public comment, please.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, as the neighborhood council budget advocate speaking for myself, the budget advocate in a letter provided the following recommendations. Budget advocates also noted the history has shown indiscriminate reductions, especially in revenue-generating departments, can result in unintended consequences. They warn against slashing critical administrative functions, the civil service, such as personnel, which could have, which could leave the city of LA struggling to recover once economic conditions improve. The city service under attack at the federal level and at the local level. We must ensure that civil services are protected, that the city provides the services that it needs to the constituency, especially the low-income areas like Sun Valley, Pacoimas, South LA, East LA. We cannot accept the budget by the mayor as it is. We need to adjust it to protect city services. I'm a taxpayer and a civil servant and a budget advocate. I love my city. I want to protect our city services. Democracy needs to be heard, and happy birthday, Sean. Thank you for sitting in council.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item one and general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
Thank you. So item one is a bond, issuing a bond in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12 million. There's going to be a tax equity and fiscal responsibility hearing at city council today. That's, I guess, this hearing. So for this Japanese-American national museum, I assume that part of their exhibits will be commemorating the internment camps that Japanese-Americans were imprisoned in during the events of World War II. As you probably know, because of these internment camps, Japanese-Americans who survived those camps were issued $20,000 reparations via the Civil Liberties Act of 1988. But we still don't have reparations for American descendants of slavery, which I think is something that this council should maybe be discussing and should be brought to the attention of our leaders. Monday, the mayor gave an address summary. She thinks she is the best, but let's be honest, she lied when she promised that impending layoffs are a last resort. The budget that the mayor has proposed is some kind of joke. Council, take note. It's on you to rectify this. Reject this bullshit. Maintain the city workforce. How can she say everything is fine while city workers' jobs are on the line? We're in a crisis. Our city services have already been lacking for the longest time. Happy birthday, Sean. I'm so glad to know you. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you. That was, that was really lovely.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call more names. Manny C. and Sean Murphy.
And Speaker, before you begin, so, Mr. Candido, please do not disrupt this meeting. I'm trying to clarify some things for the public. So with Mr. Candido, you do not need to respond. You've been warned already. Please do not continue to disrupt this meeting.
Mr. Candido, this is a warning. This is your first and only warning, and if you continue to disrupt the meeting, you will be asked to leave.
So the item number one, the Tefra hearing date has been changed. There was an amendment that was announced at the beginning of the meeting. It is open for public comment today, but just to clarify, that the amendment, if approved, would change the date of the Tefra hearing to May 7, 2025. So for anybody who's listening, I just wanted to make that clear. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
The ones I submitted on the kiosk. One and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, so one, so you just announced the, I guess maybe you announced at the beginning of the meeting, but if it was just announced now, shouldn't that mean everyone who already spoke on it should get another chance, since the date's a different one now? But I guess, it sounds like you announced at the beginning of the meeting, I guess, so technically, and, you know, and within the Brown Act barely. That's pretty much the general way you do things. You're within the Brown Act barely, maybe. But, but yeah, then you should, it's good to have this stuff for the museum, so we can, yeah, so let's go to general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, so it'd be nice if, it looks like some of you have finally taken your seats again, but I don't know, is Tracy back? Tracy walked, left and, like, went downstairs. She's not even in the room anymore. I don't even see her. I don't know, I can barely see anything. You have her, everyone's so far back here. The public can't even see you back here. But if Tracy's, did go downstairs, she doesn't come back, she should be taken off the board. She's not present at the meeting anymore. She's absent. She left, so she's not present. So the budget is absolutely awful. I don't know, I don't know where to start. It's just, it's gonna, it's gonna devastate the city, all because we need to give the cops more money. They get a budget increase. They're one of the few departments to get a budget increase. I mean, you did at least give the fire department some of their money back, or they will, the mayor did, but, but I mean, police get more money while city workers get, you know, laid know, laid off, services get cut, three shelters have to be closed, dogs get euthanized.
So, all, all the item and general comment.
Okay, these will be our final two speakers.
Look at how intently Lee Staffordby is listening. I'm so glad. So, under Tefra, you're required to have a fair hearing under federal law. That means no censorship, no banning of words, but most importantly, under Tefra, you have to vote on the item. Now, when you sit in your chairs and you're on the board, once the clerk opens the roll, he don't, he never takes the roll. He just opens it and closes it, and all of you council criminals, as long as your name is on that board, the clerk automatically enters your vote yes, whether you vote or not, whether you pay attention or not. That's called voter fraud, and you've been doing it for years. Years of this voter fraud. So under Tefra, I'm giving notice, I demand the city clerk take the role legally, under Tefra, or you are violating federal law. Now for my public comment, Mr. Price's next hearing is June 6, 2026, at 8:30 a.m. in Division 32. So, Jesus, he gets paid $22,000 a month to be on an indictment. Let's give him a hand for that. That's great. But remember, Mr. Santos, a former congressman, just got eighty-seven months in the federal pen. Many of you on this council, I don't think, are quite that far behind him. You're a little bit. So again, you, you, you want to violate me? That's, that's not the problem. Your problem is your lawyer is not giving you proper, effective, unconflicted, competent legal representation. So, the city clerk, you don't take the role. You don't even know if there's a quorum, because you're engaged in a civil conspiracy and a criminal conspiracy with these council members, because you never tell me if these criminals are voting yes or no. So just keep up the good work. There's a cell right next to Mr. Santos. Free up.
Good morning, sir. Which items?
What's going on, gorgeous? That was, that was for the city attorney. Item one and public comment.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general.
If you get the wrong idea.
Go ahead.
She knows my wife. I got, I think $12 million is a lot of money for something like, for something that, like, I don't know, how many Japanese-American actors and celebrities and people from LA have come through here, been honored? How many of them have given back? Could we maybe contact one of them to put forward some money, instead of taking it out of the people that are hungry, losing their homes? You say, Nithya used to say there was no money to buy buildings and refurbish them. Now that there are, and it's funny, there's also $12 million to give to Japanese-American museum or something. It's a weird coincidence, especially when the mayor's saying that layoffs are inevitable, but we have $12 million to give for, as far as I know, there isn't a giant hole in the roof of that building that costs $12 million. If there is, I guess this is the only cure, but I'm pretty sure there's not. Maybe Otani, with, with his endorsements, he has like over $100 million a year or some shit, maybe he could give up a million for this, and this could be 11 million instead.
General public comment.
Thank you very much. Appear strong when you are weak. I think somebody said that, and Nithya Rahman's a great example of that, although it's hard to say that she appears strong ever, trying to get control of the meeting, when even her cohorts won't pay attention, having to be like, oh, let's, oh, never mind, I guess